Buenas tardes. Vamos a llamar a esta audiencia pública y a nuestra reunión de la Comisión de Planificación para ordenar. Quiero bienvener a todos ustedes por venir. Por medio de introducción, somos la Comisión de Planificación. John McCullough, quien nos da la riqueza de conocimiento sobre cómo hacer mapas y el pensamiento crítico. Gary, quien nos da nuestras cosas dulces para nuestros dulces, a veces, a veces no lo hace, nos da el sentido de sentido común y historia, historia, lo que sea que quiera decir, la historia detrás de muchas de las cosas que han sucedido aquí en Calis. Melanie Keane nos da la experiencia de mantenernos dentro del estatuto, para que no seamos renegados al estado. Ha, ha, ha. También nos da un sentido de otro tipo de pensamiento crítico. Y soy Jan Olson, quien trata de facilitar y unir todo esto. Aun pensé el otro día que mi primer trabajo y uno de mis últimos trabajos como gerente de marketing productivo fue escribir especificaciones para un codificador. Ahora, ¿no es eso apropiado para escribir regulaciones? No sé. Así que esta noche podemos ir a la siguiente diapositiva. Nuestra agenda esta noche será una especie de agenda breve, pero cubrirá muchas de las cosas que empezamos... ¡Oh! Tengo que agradecer a Donna, que está tomando los minutos. Bien, ahora vamos a ir. Así que lo que vamos a tener esta noche es una descripción de los cambios generales. Me animaría a ustedes, aquí está el reporte, el reporte requerido, que tenemos que enviar al estado y también al planificación regional central Vermont. Y se realiza en dos partes. Me animaría a todos a tomarlo a casa y leerlo. Es un poco intenso, tal vez. Así que, y en esto está el amendamiento de lo que hemos estado trabajando desde nuestra audiencia pública del 20 de septiembre. Así que vamos a pasar por los cambios generales. Vamos a ver los cambios que se hicieron después de la primera reunión, primera audiencia. Y luego vamos a renovar, revisar todos los cambios en el Schrod y en realidad los cambios en la corredora del río. Y esto va a estar mirando los mapas, para que puedan ver la diferencia. Y luego simplemente mantenemos nuestras labios cerrados y vamos a escuchar a ustedes. Eso es básicamente lo que vamos a hacer. Bien, así que cuando comenzamos a mirar el terreno, estuvimos mirando el distrito actual del terreno y encontramos que cerca del 60% de las casas y edificios en el distrito del terreno eran noncompatientes. Estaban o 0.17 acres, 0.5 acres, nunca alcanzaron el requisito de tres acres del distrito del terreno. También encontramos un par de parcelas que estaban en el terreno que no poseían terreno de terreno, ya saben, no tenían acceso. Así que sentimos que eso tampoco era muy bueno. Y así también sentimos y escuchamos de muchos de los residentes en los varios lagos que querían tener algún tipo de regulación que coincidiera o alineara mejor con lo que era el acto de protección del estado para el terreno. Así que teníamos un objetivo mientras estábamos mirando todo esto, hacer una overlay del terreno. Y hubo algunos comentarios sobre la overlay del terreno. No les gustaba la idea de una overlay del terreno. Prefieren tener un distrito, pero decidimos que realmente lo mantendríamos como un distrito de overlay del terreno, que llamamos Schrod. Así que aquí en en, lo llamo Schrod, para que sepas lo que significa. También sentimos que tener una overlay proporcionaría un mayor control para la protección de la calidad del agua, los animales y los amphibios y las cosas que viven en los varios lagos aquí. Y así decidimos seguir con eso. El otro componente es la erosión y el control de desplazamiento. Y agregamos una nueva sección, 3.15, que se usa para todos los distritos, que se aplica a cómo controlar la erosión y el manejo del agua cuando se está desarrollando. Ahora, el estado requiere algo a un acre. Si disturbias más de un acre, tienes que aplicar un permiso al estado. Lo que simplemente hicimos fue decir, lo que sea que hagas, incluso si está bajo un acre, nos anima a la gente a usar los mismos estándares que el estado está usando para monitorear y prevenir el control de la erosión. El mayor problema que escuchamos cuando estábamos haciendo investigación con varias personas en el, creo que Melanie fue al departamento del río, o el río, sí. Y lo que nos estaban diciendo es que no es tanto el tamaño del buffer el que es el problema. Su preocupación es el control de la erosión y el manejo del agua. Y cuando miras nuestras carreteras, que están todas next a un lago, piensa en todo el desplazamiento que pasa por la carretera y hacia el lago, o hacia la ramada Kingsbury, o hacia cualquiera de las ramadas alrededor de Peaking Brook. Así que pusimos 3.15. La segunda gran cosa que hicimos en esta actualización es la overlay de peligro de inundación fue totalmente reescrito y agregamos una control de río, río, ¿qué quiero decir? Overlay de corredora, que es nuevo. Ahora, hicimos eso por un par de razones. La ciudad puede obtener un fondo de asistencia de emergencia de ayuda. En este momento estamos en el 12%. Esto significa que si un desastre sucede, el estado ayudará a pagar hasta el 12% en la resolución de inundaciones, en lugar de nosotros como individuos que tienen un problema. Al agregar overlay de corredora, agregamos el 5% y vamos a llegar a un retorno del 17% en el fondo de emergencia de ayuda. Así que estamos haciendo eso por una razón monetaria. Pero lo que fue interesante en mirar la corredora del río es que hay algunas casas que existen que están en la corredora del río. Miramos si debería haber algún edificio en la corredora del río y optamos por decir que no habría nuevos desarrollos en la corredora del río, absolutamente ninguno. Es más fácil para nosotros como ciudad administrar, y así es donde vamos con eso. Así que esa fue la otra edición. El otro tipo de cosa más grande fue relativo al Consejo de Asesoría de Diseño en la sección Había algunas cosas que están en existencia hoy en día que sentimos como Comisión de Planificación que no está responsable de hacer muchas de las cosas que dijo que estábamos. Así que reescribimos el proceso de cómo funcionaría el Consejo de Asesoría de Diseño relativo tanto al administrador de la zona como a la revisión de DRB. Y tratamos de describir el proceso para que fuera comprensible. Hablaré más de eso más tarde. Luego hicimos muchos ajustes mixtas. Creamos una hoja de trabajo de proyecto para ser usado por personas que están construyendo en agricultura. No sé si saben que las ferros pueden casi construir cualquier cosa en cualquier momento sin un permiso. Pero queríamos saber dónde estaban poniendo el edificio. Y así es por lo que desarrollamos una hoja de trabajo para que al menos nos dimos cuenta de dónde están poniendo el edificio. No tienen que pagar un permiso, es aguas. Y así hicimos eso. Teníamos un acuerdo, pero no estuvimos de acuerdo en algunas cosas, en cómo hacer que funcione, así que lo retiramos después de nuestra reunión de septiembre. No vamos a tener el posibilidad de un acuerdo. Y me animaría a mucha gente a leer el nuevo capítulo sobre definiciones. Las definiciones son probablemente una de las cosas más importantes en torno. Creo que será útil cuando DRB tenga que hacer algún tipo de toma de decisión, leer y mirar esas definiciones. Así que básicamente eso es lo que cubrimos en nuestra reunión de 20 de septiembre. Vamos la próxima. Pero no creo que fuimos muy buenos en explicar lo que estábamos haciendo. Así que tuvimos mucha ayuda en mirar y revisar especialmente las regulaciones del terreno. Así que quiero agradecer a Larry, quiero a Norine. David Ellenbogen y John Rosenblum participaron en muchas de nuestras reuniones. Fueron instrumentales en ayudarnos a llegar a un overlay del terreno mucho mejor, Schrod. Y debemos agradecer a Ann Winchester, que se metió y nos ayudó antes de que se convirtiera en miembro de la select board, para escribir este lenguaje de una manera que nos ayudó a moverlo y hacerlo mejor. Así que no estaríamos aquí hoy probablemente sin su ayuda, para ser honestos. Los cambios que hicimos después, entre septiembre y la reunión de hoy, pensábamos que reuniríamos y quedaremos con lo que el estado quería y tendríamos una superficie impermeable del 20%. Pero nuestra historia en Calis es tener una superficie impermeable del 10%. Y se sentía importante por la Comisión de Conservación y los lagos y los ríos que mantengamos al 10%. Así que seremos diferentes en más formas que una, de lo que el estado tiene. Extenderemos nuestro terreno de arriba y nuestro buffer que pasa por una carretera, que no detiene en una carretera. Si hay un propietario que va más allá de la carretera, se espera o se anima a usar las mejores prácticas de gestión en ese lado de la carretera. Luego somos diferentes con la superficie impermeable al 10%. La otra cosa es que el estado tiene algo llamado área de 40% limpia. ¿Es 40 o 20?
40.
40, gracias.
Es 40.
Correcto. Así que el estado hace 40, pero nuestra calculación de la 40% de la tierra limpia va a ser solo la cantidad de tierra en la área de arriba. Y cuando hagamos los mapas verán lo que significa. Es esa propiedad que va de 100, del buffer a la extensión exterior. Y en el caso de East Calis y Curtis Pond, ¿cómo siempre digo Curtis Pond? Eso va, tienen un 750, un 700 pies de arriba, porque en el lado oriental querían un 800.
800.
Sí, pero es 700 de arriba.
Y además el...
Y el 100.
Correcto, tienes razón. Más grande.
Esto va a ser, suena como polvo, pero cuando vean los mapas verán. Hay muchas estructuras no conformantes en la área del terreno. Así que articulamos mejor, creo, lo que el DRB espera revisar a esos no conformantes. Cubrimos cosas como la estabilización de bancos, que no había estado ahí antes. Para miembros de la select board, el acto de protección del estado también tiene estándares para carreteras que están por el lago. Y espero que como se haga la revisión de nuestros estándares de carretera, que algunos de esos estándares cerca del lago, que se mueven por las esquinas de nuestros ponds, podrían ser sujetos a algunos de esos estándares que tal vez no tengamos ahora. Es solo una cosa futura. También pusimos que en esta área de arriba, hay desarrollo específico. Ahora, cuando comparamos la diferencia entre un distrito residencial rural y un distrito del terreno, había muy poca diferencia en lo que se podía hacer. Pero hay algunas cosas que pasamos que sentimos que no deberían probablemente desarrollarse en el arriba. Y por lo tanto, hay algunas cosas que podrían desarrollarse, pero necesitan revisión drb estricta. Así que esas se ponen en los estándares para este cambio. Y el otro gran cambio es que pasamos de una slope del 20% a una slope del 15%. Hay algunos que todavía quieren una slope del 10%. Sentimos que podríamos comprometerse con un 15%. Así que esos son los cambios que hicimos. Otros cambios, cuando están haciendo regulaciones, tienen que tener no solo lo que están haciendo aquí, pero tiene que estar conectado y interconectado con otras secciones de las regulaciones. Así que tuvimos que hacer algunos cambios a las secciones 3.8, 3.12, que son recursos naturales, 3.13, que es slope, y 3.14, que es protección del agua. Así que hicimos trabajo y limpiamos un poco de lenguaje en eso. Oh, sí, la slope máxima es el 15%. Y luego hicimos una revisión total de la revisión de diseño del distrito histórico entre este tiempo, septiembre y ahora. Y agregamos mucho más definiciones. Así que con eso, vamos a pasar a algunos mapas para que algunos de ellos sean un poco más claros. Así que mirando esto, lo que tenemos aquí es nuestros existentes distritos de zoning alrededor de los lagos. Y tenemos un buffer vegetativo de 50 pies, un 150 pies equivalente a un arriba, supongo.
Es como casi un zone de no construcción.
Es casi, sí, pero pueden construir en él.
No realmente, no según nuestros reglas, 150 pies de agua.
Sí. Oh, ese es un paso atrás de la agua. Y luego tenemos lagos. Ahora, nuestras actualizaciones son para lagos de 20 acres, las nuevas regulaciones son para 10 acres. Así que terminamos añadiendo lagos nuevos que no habían estado antes, y eso incluía cosas como Lake Watson, Mud Lake en el área noroeste, que es justo aquí.
Adamant Pond.
Y Adamant Pond. Así que si nosotros, John, vamos a dejar estos y primero vamos a los distritos de zoning Al hacer nuestra revisión de los distritos de zoning, la mayoría de todo, este rojo, este rojo bolso, eso es residencial rural. Eso es un mínimo de tres acres, muy similar a lo que es el distrito del terreno hoy. Y verán aquí el bolso rojo, lo que todos llamaran, está justo aquí, next a Curtis Pond. Así que algunos parcelas van a ser both residenciales y vecindarias, algo como lo que son ahora, excepto que en lugar del distrito del terreno es residencial rural. La gente en Adamant, ahora mismo, su distrito de la vecindad va todo el camino por el lago. Pero dijeron que estarían dispuestos a reducir su vecindad y hacer su... Bien, sí.
¿Quieres concentrarte en Adamant por un rato?
Sí, estoy en Adamant, sí. Así que quiero mostrar, estuvieron de acuerdo en reducir, esta es la forma en que están ahora, tienen un distrito de la vecindad que va todo el camino por el lago. Estuvieron de acuerdo que sentían que querían proteger su lago, así que detuvieron su vecindad. Dijeron que querían que todo aquí arriba fuera residencial, y su distrito de la vecindad sería muy abajo aquí.
Era aproximadamente un tercio del camino hacia el lado oriental del lago.
Jan, ¿estás hablando de Sadam Pond?
No, no, Adamant.
Adamant Pond.
Bien, así que más cerca de la escuela de música.
Correcto, sí, sí. Y pensé, bien, continuemos con North Calis, es el otro que tenía un poco de, bueno, bastante diferencia, en realidad.
Bien, así que voy a poner el...
Sí. Bien, así que lo que pasa ahora, lo que tienes ahora es, este es el distrito del terreno y su distrito de la vecindad es aquí. Lo que pasó a lo largo del año, querían convertirse en un centro designado de la vecindad, para que pudieran tener, utilizar, obtener algunos préstamos para Memorial Hall. Y al hacer eso, sabiendo que estábamos mirando una overlay menor, nos acordamos de ellos y así nuestra zoning propuesta para North Calis es esta, que incorpora todo esto aquí. Ahora, en cada caso, Adamant y el lado sur de Curtis Pond, que es más cerca de Worcester Road, y esta área aquí, el agua fluye de esta manera. Así que todo alrededor de este lago sería residencial rural, con la excepción de aquí por aquí, que será vecindario. Y así es como es. Así que ahora si vamos al buffer vegetativo, pueden ver que aquí hay un buffer de 100 pies alrededor del lago. Y luego si agregamos el terreno, la área de arriba, nuestra overlay va todo el camino hasta aquí. Así que la protección del lago pasa por aquí. Este es Nelson Pond. Y esas son algunas de las diferencias básicas. Quieres poner Curtis Pond, para que podamos mostrar el 100 pies. Así que lo que Curtis Pond parece, en el lado oriental, en el lado oriental querían una overlay de 800 pies, bueno, un total de 800 pies como overlay, de los cuales 100 pies es buffer y 700 pies es arriba.
¿Quiénes son ellos?
Lagos y ríos en la conservación.
Y así, ¿por qué es el lado oriental de Curtis Pond tiene una larga y no hay nadie más, ningún otro lugar?
Jan, lo siento. Estoy feliz de hablar de ambas organizaciones, pero no fuimos los que llegaron con eso. Este fue, mi comprensión es que fueron los propietarios de la tierra mismos.
Bueno, yo...
O alguien que dijo, no, no...
Nadie ha hablado conmigo, o nunca he oído algo de los propietarios de las demás tierras. Solo siento que, ya sabes, si, ¿por qué no hay 700 pies alrededor de todos los otros lugares también?
Queríamos conformarnos principalmente con lo que el estado tenía.
¿Son ellos 700?
No, son 250.
Así que supongo, ¿por qué hay 700 ahí?
Básicamente porque fue una solicitud de gente que escuchamos, que querían más...
¿Puedo saber quiénes son?
¿Perdón?
Estoy bastante en contacto con muchas personas en el pond, no sé, pero puedo averiguar cuántas personas han pedido por eso.
Bueno, fueron las personas que vinieron aquí. Fueron las personas que vinieron a nuestras reuniones que escuchamos.
Algunas veces, y no puedo recordar, pero debería estar en el medio.
Solo parece bastante injusto, poner 700 pies en ese espacio, que soy propiedad real de ese área. Solo parece que tal vez un par de personas en el pond, pero estoy solo preguntando, ¿ha todo sido notificado en el pond? Quiero decir, sé que tienes tus reuniones, pero ¿algunas personas se dedican a decir en lugar de...?
Las personas que han venido a la reunión que vienen del lago han sido bastante adamantas de querer un 800 pies en el lado oriental de Curtis Pond. Y decidimos acceder a ese deseo, ¿verdad?
¿Dónde estamos en el proceso? Así que qué es, como si Marj quisiera hablar con sus vecinos y entender esto mejor, ¿dónde estamos con esto?
Hemos estado haciendo esto...
Yo comprometo Harry Carey, ¿cómo se llama?
¿Tú?
Yo comprometo Harry Carey.
Bueno, si 700 es necesario en el lado oriental, ¿por qué no es necesario en el lado occidental, en Nelson Pond, o en cualquier otro lugar?
Tenemos una carta del presidente de la Comisión de Conservación que quiere ver la área de arriba extendida a 500 pies de agua en lugar de 250.
¿En todos los ponds?
Sí, todos los ponds. Correcto, esa era nuestra posición, no era...
Donna tiene una pregunta.
Solo tengo una pregunta y tengo una declaración, porque tengo que escuchar estas reuniones dos veces al mes los últimos dos años. No han tenido muchas reuniones y han sido informados por el porche form en todos los lugares. Y anoche trataron de llevar este proceso adelante y francamente no obtuvieron el apoyo de la select board. Esperaban que esto fuera hecho por esta reunión de la ciudad, ¿verdad?
Sí. Queríamos que se votara en marzo.
Sí.
Y no pudimos hacer el trabajo de calidad que queríamos hacer en marzo, así que para hacerlo en tiempo para el voto. Tenía que ir, tiene que ir a la select board y tiene, y nuestra historia es que tomamos nuestros estándares y nuestras regulaciones y se votaron por la ciudad. Así que el proceso probablemente sería, en mi mente, es que vamos a ir adelante con este cambio, y si la gente quiere que volvamos y revise las regulaciones para el próximo recorrido, lo agregaremos a una lista de cambios para la próxima actualización. Este estándar y lo que hemos hecho aquí incluye la corredora del río. Incluye mucho. Y cuando votas por esto, sí, estás votando por todo el paquete, no solo el terreno. Estás votando por todo lo que hemos estado trabajando durante cuatro años.
Marj, creo que específicamente en la cuestión de tu pregunta sobre, ya sabes, ¿por qué es diferente el tamaño allí de donde es elsewhere? Realmente creo, creo que lo que se reduce a es la intensidad del desarrollo en ese lado de Curtis Pond ya y cuántas estructuras no conformantes hay. Mientras que en otros lugares que están alrededor de otros ponds, con un par de excepciones muy pequeñas, los lugares que están intensamente desarrollados alrededor de otros ponds y en otros lados de Curtis Pond ahora no están intensamente desarrollados ahora mismo y tienen protección, un mínimo de tres acres de protección de estar en residencial rural o particularmente en el lado occidental de Curtis Pond, son slopes altas y están prohibidos de cualquier desarrollo debido a eso, porque exceden el slope del 15%. Así que cuando hicimos una revisión y realmente hicimos una revisión, lot por lot, alrededor de todos los cuerpos de agua en Calis, incluyendo arriba y abajo las corredoras del río, no pudimos realmente discutir contra las personas que articularon su preocupación sobre el lado oriental de Curtis Pond como una situación especial en Calis, solo debido a la densidad existente de desarrollo allí y el número de nonconformes que están adyacentes a esa propiedad. Así que eso es lo que estaban intentando allí para tratar de extender nominalmente la misma protección que otros lugares. Realmente, ya sabes, si vamos a 250 pies en ese lado del pond, la parte que ahora mismo está en la overlay se convertiría en parte del distrito residencial rural y el distrito residencial tiene, a un gran grado, los mismos limites del desarrollo. Así que, ya sabes, con la excepción de, oh, no sé, una instalación de almacenamiento de combustible y un centro de jardín y jardín y cosas así que son...
Que son escritas.
Que son específicamente prohibidos en el distrito de overlay. Realmente, el arriba, quiero decir, sí, el arriba, una parte del distrito del terreno tiene regulaciones muy similares al distrito residencial rural. Así que, ya sabes, cuando mantuvimos todas esas cosas en balance, parecía que era, era valioso... it was worthwhile to, to accede to the requests that were put in front of us. So, didn't seem like it was, it was, it didn't seem like it was a great burden on you and other people in your situation and it did seem like it, it made sense from a density of development standpoint. That's really my take on how this shook down during these hearings.
Can I ask a clarifying question? You just said that the landowners requested this. Is it the landowners on the eastern side that requested it or landowners on another side of the pond? Because you said they kept coming to the meetings.
The most vocal people that have attended our meetings have been from Curtis Pond.
So somewhere on Curtis Pond, but not necessarily Curtis.
Well, that's, that's where the people live, on Curtis Pond.
Right, but not necessarily the, because she was asking whether they were warned or not. But you didn't hear about it, right?
Well, I know stuff was going on, but I guess I didn't realize that it was going to be 700 feet.
Well, but it, but it is now. It already is. It's not, we're not making those regulations more stringent. We're just, we're just retaining, retaining the, those regulations in that area.
I don't know enough of what we can do or can't do now compared to what we have been doing. What is...
There's not much difference. Short of, of going out and, and reading the new changes here.
John, do you agree with that statement? There's not much difference.
I'm sorry, what?
Do you agree with that statement?
Yes, as far as dimensional standards, they're the same as rural residential as far as setbacks and, and minimum acreage. There is the 40% maximum clearing, where in rural residential, we've probably seen examples around town here and there, people can clear cut basically. You can't, and in the, in those pink crosshatches, only 40%, and that includes new impervious surface. So that would be the total amount cleared in impervious surface that you could add to any of the pink crosshatched area. But it doesn't, it, it doesn't mean that you can't develop it. In fact, some of these, some of these pink shaded areas are large enough to support another building, an accessory dwelling, for example, and it would still be completely compliant with the, with the zoning regs. So the, the pink isn't, isn't like a no-build zone.
The pink is exactly the same as your Shoreland is now.
Except for some uses.
And in uses and in setbacks and in everything like that. So basically, this...
I guess I just don't understand why Curtis Pond is on the east side. Single lot.
Basically because people came and talked to us about it, that's all.
Loud, loud people.
Isn't there a hill on the west side? Isn't there a hill on the other side?
Yes, very, very steep.
Yeah, and, and way up on that, that's Resource Recreation, which is 10 acres, I think, is it? Or is it 25?
There's no development potential on the west side.
Yeah. Rose and then...
Yes, 10 acres.
Just because it looks like such a pretty map. Can you like point to the Callis Worcester Road or where the Maple Corner Store is?
Yeah. Here's the Worcester Road.
That's Worcester Road. Maple Corner Stores, this one? Or this one?
And Camp Road would be...
Pardon, which one?
Camp Road, like near the dam. The dam is right there at that little point. Right? Okay. Okay, so when you drive on the Worcester Road, you really only see that much of Curtis Pond.
Yeah, the road is here.
Yeah, and then all the rest is...
Right, if you go on the interactive map that's on our website...
Oh, thank you. Oh, okay. Yeah, thanks. I mean, thank you. This is great. Yep?
Thank you.
I just need to know where I am.
Where am I? Yeah.
I'm wondering, given this conversation, could you just summarize what the change is? Like what, what is being proposed that is different? Like what would, what, what would, like if you were to apply now versus if these, if this change were to be approved by the town, what would be the difference for somebody proposing something?
Well, when, when a permit application comes in, John might be able to answer this better. When a permit application comes in now for Shoreland District, the Shoreland District acts, the only thing they have is the 50-foot buffer and 150-foot setback. There is no recommendation for what kind of plants to put in, best, best, best management practice for what you plant. There is, I have a note here or something. Actually, there are no standards in there relative to mowing in Shoreland, in the Shoreland District. There's, and so we're keeping a 10% impervious surface, which is the same. Clearing is more spelled out. And if you go to the standards within the buffer, there's no new development in the buffer. We've made the buffer of 100 feet to be almost sacrosanct. And the upland area, which in all areas except the eastern side, it's, you can do almost everything except maybe three things, and I don't remember them from the top of my head, and, and a few things extra that have to go to the DRB to be allowed. But the setbacks are all the same because the setbacks in rural residential are the same as pretty much the setbacks at Shoreland. I would say that what the overthrott is doing is trying to control how land is developed around the edges of the lake. And I think what was telling to me was, I don't know if it was John Rosenblum or Noreen who made the comment that we are loving our lakes to death. So I'm asking you to love your lakes to more by having a greater protection around the overlay, using the overlay as that protection method. That's what really, I guess my rush would be.
I just chime in. One, one practical reason for all of this is the State Shoreland Protection Act requires that, that buffer, that vegetated buffer imposes a lot of these requirements already. So we're sort of conforming our zoning to the state baseline and then going a little further on a few things with the help of folks who've been participating in our meetings. So if that makes sense.
So when is the 50-foot vegetation thing, Nina? Are you going to make everybody put 50 feet for vegetation?
More than 50 feet that the state has imposed on all lakes and ponds greater than 10 acres, acres in area. So we're conforming our zoning to the state requirement. Folks in those areas will still have to get their state permit, but this is the zoning mitigation. I'm so sorry?
Medication?
Yes, the state allows mitigation.
Karen, it might be important to point out, is, is okay. First of all, the state and now under these regulations, the town, has a buffer zone that's composed of two parts. The part next to the pond is 100 feet deep from the mean water line. And that's what in these few regulations, I mean, it's called a vegetated buffer zone. After that 100 feet, there's what's, what's called in these regulations, the upland zone, and that's another 150 feet. So the total buffer is 250 feet. If I understood your, the thrust of your question, the, the, I think Jan answered it or hit on it when she talked about how in the vegetated buffer, under these regulations, there won't be any more development. What's there is there and can stay there, but expanding it or, or doing other things, you know, clear cutting the trees or something, that, that wouldn't be permitted under these.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm talking about the 100-foot part, not the whole 250 feet. 250 feet is where that 40% clearance and, and 20% impervious. Well, that's for the whole, that's actually the whole tract. But it, but because nothing even can be built in the 100-foot buffer zone, any tract or matter, any building we're talking about, any other clearing would be in that upland zone. I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question? While you've got that map up there, you've got something in 314 that says there's a geologic formation between the dam and the village?
Yes.
And that there's no, there will be no digging, trenching or excavation. Can you just show me where that is? I'm curious whether that will affect when we fix the Curtis Pond dam.
It won't.
Okay.
It, I can.
But we can't dig.
I can.
It's hard to run this map.
That, that actually, that actually runs right up here. And see this little dotted line here?
No.
Where my finger is?
Yeah.
It's right there. Let me turn on the existing Shoreland and then, the shape of the existing is actually there. Can you see, can you see that line? That's the one you were pointing to.
And where is the dam?
Right there.
Right there. So are we going to be digging right there?
But you're in the water, aren't you? Isn't the dam in the water?
There's work to be done in the water.
Tom?
It goes to the shore.
Right. But you're in, you're, you're under the old regulations.
So let's not approve.
But I did have a conversation with Jamie about that a little bit, especially when we were talking about bank stabilization. I mean, it was kind of an interesting, but I think they're covered because they're writing their permit based on the old, old language until this is voted on.
The weird thing is, any work in the water can't be touched by local zoning, state.
Well, I didn't hear your last words.
Pardon me?
I didn't hear your last word.
And any work in the water is the jurisdiction of the state that the town has no control.
And there is bedrock underneath. That's part of the plan.
Yeah, there's, well...
Because the planning wants to give me acres into the bedrock.
There's, there's actually outcroppings of bedrock all the way up here. You can, you can walk, I did walk with a state geologist and he, he ascertained this line and then from this side of the dam, it actually comes down this way. And it's, it's, it's visible, it's on the surface, and the, the regulation is, is just all about not blasting holes in it because it's, you know, that's a watershed. Everything on this side of that, the watershed is this way away from the pond and gets into the brook through a different avenue than going into pond. And so any, any development of, of these properties that are bisected by that had to stay off of the top of that outcrop.
Okay, but aren't we going to have to excavate into the bedrock to put those, you said, anchored into the...
Yeah, but they're not, it's kind of sticking it in.
We excavate silt to the bedrock and then drill pegs into the bedrock.
You kind of have to drill a hole, I guess.
Because you can't disturb the bedrock. Okay, well, as long as nothing's ruined.
So I'm assuming for, since you brought it up, that if the state approves that we do the, the repair, the repair of the dam that the, that the Department of Environmental Conservation approves, that that would override, that we could do that and the town wouldn't stop us?
No, we'd, we'd, according to, I think, John, the zoning administrator, we have to have that permit from them to even, you know, whatever.
Right, and that's what...
And we'd have to...
They're kind of managing the, the permits for the dam.
Right, right.
And Kamene and I have been, and John said that until we get the D C, dam safety permit, that he can't really start on the, that's kind of...
Not really. You need all the state permits before the town can get...
So I think you had applied for state protection, for the State Protection Act, hadn't you, SPA?
I'm sorry. My ears are going all night.
I think you had, I thought Jamie said that you had applied for the state permit.
Oh, yeah.
Shoreland, the Shoreland Permission Act, yeah, permit act.
Yeah, for the Shoreland and...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
For the dam safety and they're pretty close to being finished.
Right. Okay. Are there any more questions about the lakes? Because if not, can we go back to the slideshow and get to River Corridor?
Yep. Real quick, those are the ponds we have now. They're the ponds that'll be protected in the future.
Can you do it again?
Little Mud, Watson, Sodom and Adamant will be added to the list of protected ponds.
Also, Adamant is added to the list.
Yeah, Adamant is added.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Adamant, Sodom. Okay. And here's a quick look. Here's the 50-foot vegetated buffer and you go 250 feet from the water. And, oh, this is existing, 50-foot, 150-foot. And then in our current regs, in this area here in Shoreland, there are a couple of uses that are different. Otherwise, the Shoreland really doesn't have an impact. And what we're proposing is this one down here, 150-foot vegetated buffer, another 150 feet, that development is allowed, but it's controlled for a total of a 250-foot buffer.
And this, we forgot to change this to 40% max clearing.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't remember to find everything. But anyway, yeah. And we, we use Bliss Pond as kind of a, a nice way of showing what, what it is existing and here's what the new would have.
One difference between what we're proposing and what the state has too is all this area south of Bliss Pond, Bliss, Bliss Road is, is protected by our overlay standards where the state says...
The state stops.
Would stop at the road. Okay.
So, River Corridor, which looks awful. Can we enlarge this? No, I guess we can't.
I can in, in certain districts, I guess.
River Corridor is this yellow line here.
Go ahead.
And these are the rivers that have 50-foot buffers.
And what, the yellow line?
The, the yellow.
Let me go to the next slide and you can see what a River Corridor looks like.
So River Corridor follows the Meandering Sineway.
Take, take an average of the Meandering path and add 50 feet to the side of it and that's River Corridor, which is basically a no-development is allowed. And it's, the, they used to call it fluvial erosion hazard area, but it was identified by the state as an area that could be severely eroded, the kind of stuff we saw in Irene where houses dumped into the water. So in fact, this whole thing came about after Irene.
Right. Can you go back to those?
Yeah, so the, this distance between this line and this line is what you see in this, all these yellow areas.
Yeah, the yellow area here is that. But in order to have River Corridor and be accessible to the E-RAP to get the extra 5%, these little red streams are also considered River Corridor. They're not, they don't have the same, they're not mapped the same, but they are, however, we wrote it, I can't remember.
There's like a default 50-foot buffer on those. Just we haven't gotten out to actually study the river to see where the corridor is. So the smaller ones, it's just a 50.
The state came up with the yellow...
Yes.
...area and then said, whoops, we really want to add these little red areas.
And the bottom line is that everything in the River Corridor was actually, has been approved by Ned Swandberg at the River District A and R. And so...
Is there a way to access this map so we can actually see it right now? Like I'm online.
Yeah, on the Callis Online web map. It'll be clearer than this.
I'm interested in knowing if the water on my property is having, like if the zone's changing, but I can't see that, it's too small. But I'm on the town Callis website, is it on there?
Well...
Well, yeah, you can get the interactive web map via the Callis website, which is exactly what I'm doing now.
John, isn't it also in the A and R interactive map, the Natural Resources Atlas, the River Corridors?
So if you go to the Callis website...
And talk to me, thanks.
And you go to the land records, there's a thing that says interactive...
John's phone. Yeah, but I gotta log on to the network.
It's a great tool. I need to open it.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I have a question about, um, a river corridor. I have something in my mind when I hear the words "river corridor," meaning there's a river. And then there's land on either side of the river. Those red lines in particular, but also the yellow lines, are they actually moving water in all cases? Like, how much land is being removed from development possibility by those lines?
It varies. This is, uh, the, the states made the determination, and I'm not exactly sure what they used to do it. This building was a River Corridor, and we got a river scientist come from the state and looked at, looked at it and said, "The map's wrong."
John, it's based on the volume of water going through, is what I thought.
I think it's actually the, the, how many square...
Square feet of...
Square miles of...
Of water, or something like that.
Of watershed is serviced by that drainage.
Right. And unfortunately, I live on a place that has a little brook. It is mapped red. And I'm going, "Really?" It flows very hard in the spring, and it dries up in August. And I say, "Really?" So I questioned River Corridor myself in those red lines. But it, my property, I mean, I'm not gonna divide it, so I have to buy, you know, and I don't know about other people, you've got the same thing, I think.
I, I have a swale on my property, but it, but it doesn't...
So...
It only conducts water once every 20 years.
I just, but repeat the thing about the red lines are necessary for the 5% bump?
Unfortunately.
Those red lines are already protected by 50-foot stream buffers. We have a stream buffer protection that doesn't allow development or cutting, and so the red line stuff really isn't any different. There, there may be some towns that don't have stream buffer protection, but, and so the state figures that on those red streams, then they'll get it.
So you're saying there's no pragmatic change in...
Those red ones, there's no difference, no. You, you're not allowed to cut, you're not allowed to develop along those red streams. And I'm sorry, I can't access the Callis web map because I can't get onto the internet here.
You're saying this is not a change in the setback for current development?
Not the 50-footer. The, the bigger yellow one is certainly...
The bigger yellow one is because you can't develop there, period. It's, it's just that the way, they want you to have, you identify those little red, uh, streams that they think that have speed or so much amount of water going through, and they want you to identify that in the map.
Jamie's there.
Pardon?
Jamie's looking at the map.
I'm floundering around with the maps here.
Um, and that, you know, um, are you getting at, like, what's developable here in Callis?
Yeah, I mean, particularly with the River Corridors, I just know, um, sometimes there, it might be a River Corridor, but it's nowhere near water, for example. So, um, so I'm curious about if we're talking about land that kind of looks like it should and could be developable, but it's actually a River Corridor. Because I, because I'm only a person, I have no idea the answer to the question.
We have certainly run into mapping errors, uh, in the past, and there is a mechanism for, um, having that reviewed, uh, at the, at the regional and state level to, um, have a determination made whether the map was correct or incorrect.
And tax, right.
I'm sorry, so if you, you know, if you judge that, that they really screwed it, that they really screwed up, like, there's a place on Jan's property that, uh, that is a field. I mean, it's a wide-open field, and it gets mowed every year, or it used to get mowed every year. And, um, you know, that is mapped as a, as a stream. Well, there's no stream there. It's a field that water runs in sheets across. So, you know, her, her option is to have that reviewed by the state and to have a new determination made, and that's, and that certainly is available, that's a, a redress that's available.
If, if I wanted to develop. Now, what's interesting is when we first moved into our property, they said we were in, our house was in flood zone, and, and that we needed flood insurance. And I said, "No, it isn't, the house is up." So we filed for a Loma, and we had people come in and do the engineering thing, and, they approved the Loma, so that, it said, "We are not in a, in a flood zone." But it's all because of these crazy little streams that we kind of have moving around the property. So, I guess, where I wanted to go with this, this is more like a general thing, is when we were doing our maps for the town plan, um, back, way back when, um, you know, 11% of Callis is wetland, and then you've got over 50% is in current use. And then...
Five, did you say 5O?
5O, over 50% is in current use. And then you have forests and other things, I can't remember what all we had, but when you looked at what was potentially developable, it's very little.
Which is a problem, potentially.
It is a problem. It is a problem.
Yeah, because our village centers are teensy, teensy, weensy, so it'd be hard to stick an apartment building in any of our village centers, I, I think.
We don't have septic or water in our villages, right?
Right. So, yeah, so on the state level, we have this problem because they want to relegate us to building in village centers, and those aren't appropriate places to build.
Right. Well, and historically, it was, because they were lumber-built towns, and they were, they were, they were working, I mean, with the, the East Callis Gris Mill, I mean, was, was a, a mill that was workable. And Adamant, I think that Corey had a mill, I don't know, did they, I don't know, historically, I don't remember the history, but interesting, the village centers that we're saying are village centers now, North Callis had that big, uh, area that was a, a village center in many ways. And, and what happened is, you know, the mills went away and not a fit to, we talk about that, much more from a historical perspective. So, you know, that's where we are. And yes, that's our challenge, or opportunity, I don't know which way you want to look at it. Um, okay, River Corridor, that, I guess, I don't know if you want to go back to that squiggly map with the reds, but we, we, that was a big challenge for us, and we rewrote a flood hazard overlay so that we could, it, we made it better, basically, so more definitions as to what you can do and how you can do it, especially like the septic tanks, or, I mean, propane tanks and things like that. And the whole point of that is mostly to protect the people that are kind of living there, if there's a flood or something, you know, they're going to be protected. I think that's about...
That's it. That's it, my computer's giving up.
Okay. I guess so. Um, so if there's any, I mean, we'll just open it up. You folks have been asking questions, but, um, is there anything more you would like to talk about? I mean, the, what I encourage you is to read the, the required report, because it really lays out the biggest changes that came in and the other things that are, and the changes that came about since April. And other than that, I think we'll just sit and listen and take notes.
Can you share the PowerPoint?
I can share it.
Or put it on the website, either one of them.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't have very many good notes with it. I used to do a lot of notes when I did PowerPoints, and this is not, but I'll, I'll share.
And the, the map that has the layers that can be toggled on and off, we can share that as well. One word about it is you have to open it in Adobe Reader to get those layers, to switch those layers on and off.
I have trouble reading maps, I'm actually better with words than maps.
Does anybody else want a copy of the PowerPoint?
Or can we put it on the website as we suggested?
Oh, yeah, we can have Jamie put it on the website. Okay.
Yeah, no.
Okay. 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 Teagan?
Can you fix the typo on page six? Oh, hi. It's just that church is missing an R. It's a very tiny thing.
Wait, where did you find this?
Bottom of the last line of page six. Church didn't know.
We put that there just to see if you would find it. You get a gold star.
That's all, that was my only complete.
Oh, that's good, that's good. So, yeah, um, let's see, how, do I want to...
I have a question. How long did it take you to do this?
We have been working on this for four years.
Can we give them round of applause? I don't know, I don't know enough to know yet, and I'm looking forward to reading this, but that is a lot of work, and I just want to say I really appreciate it. I worked at the Yale School of the Environment back in the day, and a lot of these water quality issues were, you know, it was just like pulling teeth to get anybody to understand why you would do this in the city, and it feels really nice to live in a community where we're given, you know, such care, but thank you for all your work.
Well, we have a vacancy on the commission. You could, you could share this.
I have to deal a lot with the terminology.
You could share the story with us.
So, just so that you know, the zoning regulations are a total of 116 pages now. So, that's, that's where we are at.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just, I was trying to wait till everybody else had their say, because I was just gonna say a couple things, but...
I'm just curious about the 10% impervious surface requirement and what sort of practical effect that, in that, would that not be roads?
Driveways.
If a road were to leave, it would include that?
And driveways. Yeah.
What was your answer, John?
Driveways was considered an impervious surface.
They have a list in their proposed, their big proposed plan, they have a list of all the things that count.
What percentage are we currently of impervious surface?
Well, some of these smaller camps.
No, you said to regulate the... You're not saying 10% of land coverage, you're saying 10%?
Parcel.
Oh, with parcel, okay, thank you. Late person.
So I have a bunch of more editorial comments. Should I just give them to you in different, separately?
Yeah, you can. You were supposed to have caught those, right?
Well, not in the shroud. Well, a bunch of them have to do with waiver, I found where you didn't take some stuff out, you needed to, something like that.
But we took the waiver out.
Well, loose ends that were, you didn't take it out on page five, number three, B3, it's still there. And I, there's another place. There's just some things like that.
And you're amazing.
Yes, all right. All right. In other words, you're looking at kind of like corrections?
I found a few things that, uh, others shared with me.
Okay.
That would be super, thank you.
Yeah. Larry?
Thanks. Uh, my name's Larry DeBosch, if you don't know me. I'm here tonight sort of awkwardly wearing two hats, I guess, because I'm the vice chair of the Conservation Commission at the moment, and I'm also a member of the Callis Lakes and Streams Committee. Both of these, uh, both of those groups have participated in this process and monitored this process best we could, for most, if not all, of those four years. I'm happy to say that both of those organizations have, are going on record, I guess, tonight in supporting, um, the Planning Commission's overall revisions with regard to the shoreline zoning regulations and related matters. We didn't trouble them by following them through all the other aspects of these zoning changes. I have a couple of written things which I'll submit, from, one from the Planning Commission, I mean, one from the Lakes and Streams Committee, one from the Conservation Commission, which did hold out the possibility that some of those members could complain about the, the slope requirements and the, uh, the mowing requirements, but, but the overall, and I don't see comments for that, but...
Well, we got one in the email that I'll read.
Okay.
Or somebody.
But the bodies, the two bodies support this, and...
Do you have it?
Both want to thank the members of the Planning Commission for the, the many hours of detailed tedious work that they've done, and we were privileged to be observers to quite a few of those, so we know about that. I was, I came prepared to, with a list of things that could sort of indicate why, especially the Lakes and Streams Committee was so enthusiastically in support of this, but I, but I won't. If anybody wants to ask me about it, probably, I'm, I'm happy to share it with you. I mean, just to save your time.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we, we in turn, uh, are tremendously grateful for the participation that Lakes and Streams and Conservation, and particularly you and a few other people, but particularly you have helped us with in making these regulations what I think are, are the perfect balance between, um, between protecting our, this valuable resource that we're trying to protect and not trampling property owners' rights. And I, I think that we really hit the nail on the head with this one, and, and we couldn't have done it without you, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. The truth is, it's Norrie Ryan, who has, who's done the lion's share of the, of the heavy lifting on this, and I'm happy to bask in her glow.
Melanie, do you have Stephanie's letter?
Do I have Stefan's letter?
No. You want me to go ahead and read it?
Do I?
No, I, I was hoping, okay. Well, in an email today, Stephanie Kaplan sent me a letter, but I don't know if she's talking for the commission or for herself.
No, it's just for herself.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna read this, because this is a public hearing, and I put it in for, for the account. "I'm submitting brief written comments on the shoreline zoning revisions that you have proposed. Most of these comments have been previously submitted to you by the Callis Conservation Commission, and you declined to make the suggested modifications. Thus, I am not optimistic that my comments here will have any effect, but I'm submitting them for the record." So I'm reading them for the record. "Shoreland district versus overlay. Instead of an overlay, there should continue to be a shoreline district. The disadvantages of overlay clearly outweigh any advantages. Having a separate shoreline district underlines the importance of the shoreline and its specific standards designed to protect the water quality and other values of our lakes and ponds. It also makes the requirements for developing around the shoreline clear and minimizes confusion that often results from an overlay when essentially two different sets of district standards apply." "The extent of the shoreline district, she would like, the shoreline district should extend 500 feet from the mean water level instead of the proposed 250 feet, except that the 800-foot district boundary proposed by the Planning Commission for the east side of Curtis Pond should be retained. According to the previously submitted chart prepared by the Department, Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, a 500-foot vegetated buffer around lakes, um, provides maximum protection for water quality as well as other values. See also width of lake shore vegetation for lake protection, Vermont Agency of Natural Resources." And she's got a website here that we can go to. "Mowing. I and the Conservation Commission and the Lakes and Streams Committee have pointed out repeatedly and cited expert support that mowed grass is a poor method of capturing silt and other often harmful runoff, and that if Callis is serious about protecting water quality, mowing down to the water's edge of streams as well as lakes and ponds should be phased out. In section K of the shoreline standards, lawns within the shoreline vegetative buffer zone legally in existence on January 3rd, 2005, and which are mowed at least once every two years may be maintained if no new development takes place. Her question is, what does legally in existence mean with respect to mowing lawns?" I'm gonna answer that right here. "We changed legally in existence from, as a new terminology instead of grandfathered. How will it be determined how often landowners are or are not mowing, and how will this be enforced?" Well, it's the same question that we have had in the past, how do you enforce anything? And there we are. What I find, well, okay, I'll just keep on reading. "There is no constitutional right to mow your lawn to the water edge. The Planning Commission has the full authority to regulate this kind of mowing in the buffer zones of lakes and ponds and streams in the public interest." of lakes and ponds and streams in the public interest. To better protect the water quality of our lakes, streams, and ponds, this should be done. There is a huge amount of information about and support for the types of plantings and native vegetation that can be planted in the buffer zones of the lakes and ponds and streams to best protect the water quality. Landowners who stop mowing should be provided with assistance in planting the appropriate types of native vegetation. Slopes. It is very difficult to control erosion and runoff on slopes as steep as 10%. No slope steeper than 10% should be allowed close to the lakes, ponds, or streams. It is not clear what the purpose is of allowing construction on such steep slopes close to the water bodies that we are trying to protect." So, that's for the record.
Was the chair the Conservation Commission?
Yes. But I think she was writing for herself because
Right. Right. She is stepping down, actually. It hasn't taken effect yet because we weren't able to have the election meeting back in March, I guess. But she won't be the chair after tomorrow night.
Sorry. Teagan, what did you find?
Oh, the last line of page six. It says Old West Church, but the church didn't have an R in it in both of the
Are you talking about the report or the actual
No, the whole thing.
Regulation?
Yeah.
Did you use the one that I sent you today?
I had both. I had the one dated April and the one dated October.
I can't find it on my page six.
Maybe it's not there? Maybe I have it left in there?
Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? John?
Well, we didn't touch on the DAB stuff.
Oh, good point.
We didn't, but there's no questions about it.
Well, you could touch on it. It'd be something different.
I'll make it real quick. Right now, there's a process where, where if a project doesn't need a permit otherwise in the underlying district for the most, or it's rural residential, you're changing your shutters or changing your roofing type. You don't need a permit for that. But if you're in the historic district, you do. It used to be that even changing the roof or painting your shutters a different color meant it was tripped to the DRB. We changed it so that those changes that don't otherwise need a permit would only need DAB approval and Planning Commission approval. And then the zoning administrator could sign off on the permit app. We're changing it now, so it's just DAB and zoning administrator. And it's for all, all the things that would otherwise be considered in the underlying district. If it's purely aesthetic, then, well, zoning administrator, let's say someone wanted to put an addition on their house in the historic district, I could sign off on that as zoning administrator. The aesthetic impact would be reviewed by the DAB. And if they agreed with that, then I could follow up and complete the permit. But basically, the only time the DRB would be involved then would be if it required a conditional use. And the main conditional use or variance would be if it was in flood hazard. We've got some stuff low down on Old West Church Road that gets close to the flood hazard area. So, that's it. We're basically making it a little more streamlined, giving more control to the DAB and the ZA and cutting the PC out of the whole process. But on the advice of our lawyer, that turns out that's legally, that's something we can do. And that's what we're proposing.
And we did present this, to send this to members, what we had worked on after September into what, here. We did send these changes to the DAB members. And we heard nothing back, so we assumed silence was consent.
I got a confirmation that
Okay.
So, the DABs, they know what's going on.
So, and they seemed pleased when we did talk about it in the initial stages. They were okay with it.
The upside is, it means that most permit applications can be processed without the time it takes to go to the DRB. Even if the DRB moves as fast as possible, the warning period and all the rest of the stuff that goes with it could add a couple of months to the permitting process.
Okay. Well, if there's anything else, I will call the hearing adjourned.